For this evening. Oh, I'm sorry. Is Westboro TV up there?
I can't.
Yup.
Sorry.
Oh, Karen. It's Karen. Yeah, Karen's there. She just waved at me. Oh, I'm in the microphone, aren't I?
Yes.
Oh. 7:15, so that some people make sure that we get a full complement of people here. Okay? All right, so I have, okay. Karen, are we on?
We are.
Okay, got it. All right. Since I adjourned the joint meeting with the Board of Select and noticed that we would not begin again until 7:15, I'm just going to do some housekeeping items at this particular time. So the first thing is, do we have any minutes?
Um, yeah. Sets, the 17th of May, the 24th, and then June 7th.
Okay. Have everyone had a chance to take a look at those minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, I had no corrections on this.
Okay. All right, could I have a motion? Let's do these separately. The first one was...
May 17th.
All right, May 17th. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes for May 17?
Yeah, I move to approve the meeting minutes of May 17.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor? Those are approved three to nothing. The next minutes, Christian, are...
Um, May 24th.
May 24th. Did anybody have any corrections or additions to those minutes?
No.
Could I have a motion to approve?
Yep, I move to approve the meeting minutes for May 24th.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All right, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor? Three to nothing. The last one were June 4th, I believe.
June 7th.
June what?
June 7th.
7th, sorry. Okay, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Any questions or corrections? Could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes of June 7th.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor? It's three to nothing to approve. All right, secondly, discussion of the Housing Choice Act. I think we'll move that to our next meeting, or perhaps the meeting after.
Yes, Madam Chairman, that would be a good idea because the state has not promulgated the regulations yet.
All right, well, why don't we move that to the 27th, is it? No, 19th.
19th of July.
To the 19th of July. All right. Secondly, the discussion of the Master Plan Implementation Committee and possible vote. Jim, did you send a copy of Donnie's email off to...
To the members of the board.
Okay. But I think, I know Mark would like to participate with this, so my suggestion is that we adjourn that till the next meeting also. And everybody, take a look at the statement, which we talked about, and I think after we've reviewed it at the next meeting, we can then put an application out for people to join the Master Implementation Committee and begin to think also about how many people we want on the committee and the makeup of the committee, so we can discuss that at the next meeting.
So you're going to table that till July 5th?
Table that till July 5th.
5th. Okay.
All right.
Madam Chairman, you also have the discussion on appointment to representatives for the Open Space Preservation Committee and Sustainable Westboro Committee, and I know that Chairman Silverberg wanted to be present for that discussion, so you may wish to table that to July 5th as well.
Yes, I think it's a good idea. Let's table that to July 5th. We don't have to vote that. We can just table it.
No.
Okay, so that'll also be on the July 5th All right, so I'm going to give us, I've got 7:13, so... Pretty close. I think we'll go ahead because I know the first thing I have to do is to read a notice for a public hearing, and by the time I finish reading that, it'll probably be 7:15. All right. This is a legal notice, Town of Westboro, for special permit review hearing for 153 Turnpike Road. Pursuant to the rules and regulations relative to a special permit review under MGL Chapter 40A, Section 9, and the zoning bylaws of the Town of Westboro, the Westboro Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 28, 2022, at 6:30 at the Forbes Municipal Building, Great Hall, second-floor meeting room, 45 West Main Street, Westboro, Mass, on a proposal to operate a dog training and obedience school at the existing commercial building located at 153 Turnpike Road, Westboro, Massachusetts. No onsite dog maintenance, outdoor runs, or boarding for animals will be provided. Any person wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place noted above. A copy of the application and plan are available for review in the Westboro Planning Board offices at 45 West Main Street, Westboro, Mass, and Town Clerk's Office at 34 West Main Street, Westboro, Mass, during regular business hours. Now, I do note there, and I know this is an ineffective notice if it says 45 West Street instead of 45 West Main Street.
I don't think that's going to be an issue. I noticed that as well.
All right.
If anyone wishes to appeal that, they can file their appeal because that's published in the paper.
Okay. Westboro Planning Board, published in the Community Advocate on June 10th and June 17.
And for the public's information, the address 45 West Street is this address, 45 West Main Street, not the application. The application under review is 153 Turnpike Road, which is properly noticed in the notice.
Okay, thank you. I just noticed that and wondered about that. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
All right, would you like to come and give your name? Step up, if you could step up either to the podium or either one.
Can I go over here?
Yeah, will you be showing anything? Do you have a presentation, or you just be...
I was just going to speak to it. That's okay.
That's fine, as far as that goes. If you could give your name.
You have a copy of the site plan with the building and the space in your application package.
Okay, could you give us your name, address, and a description of what you'd like to do there?
Uh, yes. Suzette Spitzer, are you asking for my personal address?
No, the address of your...
It's 153 Turnpike Road in Westboro. It's on Route 9. And the name of the business is Zoom Room. It's Zoom Room Dog Training. It's actually a dog training franchise where the model is to train the owners to train their dogs. So the facility would have dogs coming in with their owners. They're always with their owners, so the owners are responsible for the dogs. There is no, there's no crating of the dogs. There's no overnight with the dogs. There's no grooming of the dogs. All of the training happens in premise. None of it happens outside of the facility. There's probably about, max class size is probably about eight individuals, which would mean eight dogs. And with the coming and going, you could have some overlap of dogs in and out, so maybe you would be at like 12 to 16 dogs and owners just crossing paths for a short period of time, like five minutes. It is like normal daytime hours. It is a seven-days-a-week operation.
What are your normal hours? She said normal hours. Are we talking 9 to 5? Are we talking 8 to 6?
So the hours will vary from day to day, but starting hours would likely be from 9:00 in the morning until about 6:00 or 7:00 in the evening. I know, and start up, the, that would be like Monday through Thursday. On Fridays, it's probably about 9:00 to 4:00 as the business is young and growing and getting additional clients. Saturdays would tend to be 9:00 in the morning till also 6:00 or 7:00 in the evening.
And not on Sunday?
On Sunday as well.
Sunday as well, that's, okay. Jim, do you have anything you can kind of give a little clarifications about?
Yes, so just as a point of clarification, if you're here to hear this project this evening, this is an interior operation only. I know the applicant mentioned this earlier, but there is no training, walking, or storing of dogs outside at any time. The dogs come in a vehicle to the classes. They enter the building. They stay with their master, with their owner, and then they undergo in the class, and they leave with their owner. They're not kept overnight like a kennel. They're not detained at any time. This is not doggy daycare.
No, it's not doggy daycare.
So is there a place for them to go to the bathroom from the car to the building?
There is enough grassy area that they can relieve themselves, and we will have, you know, a sanitary station to take care of that.
Okay, that's important.
Yep.
And what age dogs? Starting at what age?
Puppies, so very young. We tend to see puppies around, about eight weeks would probably be about the youngest that we would see them.
What do these classes entail? I just want to kind of know what the business is, like, yeah.
So it's a variety of classes. So it's classes as well as like socialization. So for puppies, they tend to be more of like a puppy playgroup so that they socialize and get, interact with other dogs. Very limited actual training with the dogs at that point. Probably like just sitting and really paying attention to the owner, and then you move on, and you can go up to obedience 1 to, and obedience 1 and 2, which is training the obedience of the dog. Then we do also have agility, so that is like allowing the dogs to like go through different agility setups, whether like climbing over boards and jumping through hoops. That's, that's one of the things that the customers and the clients really love. Then there's some workshops as well. So one of them that I know has generated interest is like a scent workshop, so you can train the dogs to note certain scents and be able to identify them. It does do like canine good citizen certification, so we would do that as well.
And you said that about eight dogs per class? Is that what you're looking at?
That would be like, that would be the max.
That would be the maximum. And one class at a time, or more than one class?
That facility would allow for one class at a time. There is, if you're familiar with the facility at all, it was previously, especially for pets. So the front section is retail, and then towards the back, there is an additional room that was used for training at the time. So the front part of the, that facility is going to be the gym for the dogs with a bit of retail for the dogs as well, and like there's a coffee lounge that people can watch and observe, you know, if they've got one of their family members with the dogs. So that back area could also allow for like an evaluation of one additional dog while there is a dog class going on.
And how many staff do you have?
So I don't have staff yet. I will, so I start at the recruiting process now. There would likely be at max like three staff onsite, so you could have one, you definitely need one trainer, and then maybe an additional trainer, but also a front desk person.
Jim, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, but this is a public hearing, so I was going to read the comment letters we received.
Okay, John?
Yeah, I just have one question. Do you plan on doing any soundproofing within your space?
Yes, so I know that one of the things that we're looking at is soundproofing the ceiling because there is for golf that's actually above that facility, and we do actually have soundproofing instruction from the franchise itself to soundproof the wall because then it's adjacent to the restaurant, which I think is Tenka that's there. Yeah.
Thank you.
Peter, do you have any questions?
No further questions from me.
I have no further questions. I'd like to open it up to the public. It's a public hearing. Do we have anyone here who would like to speak on this matter?
Let's see if she wants to speak.
I'm sorry, my name is Susan Data. I live on 11 Oak Street, and we're both very hard of hearing. We have a concern about the noise and the commotion that there may be because of the dogs. I didn't hear a lot what was going on tonight, but I have a question for you. Most of the animals will be going in through the back entrance, not the Route 9 entrance? Is that how it's going to work?
That was not my plan, no. I was having them coming through the front entrance.
Oh, that's wonderful, and you're going to have a little area for them to use the facilities outside in the front?
Yeah, it won't be fenced in because they, it won't be fenced in because it has, they have to be leashed, so they will have a spot. There already exists grass there that they can relieve themselves, and then there'll be a sanitation section.
But that will be primarily on the Route 9 side, not on the back side?
Right.
Right, and there's not going to be any outdoor training or runs or anything like that? The statement that I've got from the planning board said that there would be no runs, and I was concerned that you would use the back parking lot for training, but that's not the case?
No.
Okay, and you're going to have some soundproofing in the back?
Well, the soundproofing is going to be on the ceiling in the facility and on the wall in the facility. There's Zoom Rooms that are open. They've done studies, sound studies. They really are not intrusive to surroundings. So, so we're not doing anything additional on the exterior walls, so it shouldn't be any noisier than, I don't know if you were there when Especially for Pets was there?
Oh, yes, and that was the reason why we had a concern, because they were encouraging their customers to bring their animals through the back door.
Okay.
And there was a lot of blocking and commotion going on, and that's why we had a concern about this.
Yeah. So I mean, in reality, like the primary parking is in the back, so that's still where people are going to park. So they're still going to be entering and exiting their cars from that back area, but walking to the front to bring their dogs in.
So they are going to enter through the back?
No, they're still going to enter the store through the front, but most of the parking for that facility is in the back section. There's, I think there's only like five slots directly up front.
Right, there are. So they'll be parking in the back, but walking around the front?
Mm-hmm.
So they're still going to be outside in the back?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, that's what we wanted to know, so, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this matter? Jim, did you have any questions?
I just want to read to the record the letters that we received from town departments. We received a letter dated June 9th from the Board of Health. We received a response from the Building Commissioner dated June 10th with no recommendations. We received a response dated June 6th, June 14th, rather, from the Town Engineer with no recommendations. We received a response dated June 14th from the Fire Chief with no recommendations. We received a response from the Conservation Commission dated June 23rd with no recommendations. And we received a letter from and a butter Susan Data, thank you very much, which she just spoke to. Thank you.
Did you have a motion on this?
It should be in your package if you don't have a written one right here.
Now, does the Board have any more questions? The applicant?
No.
All right.
Give it to us, the top one.
I move that the Planning Board continue the public hearing for the special permit at 153 Turnpike Road to Tuesday, July 19, 2022, at 6:30 PM.
It should be the 5th, right?
Wait, there's no reason to do that, is there? I mean, do we need...
It should be June, July 5th.
July 5th.
Oh, did I say June? Oh, July, oh.
Tuesday, July 5th, and we will have a written...
Decision for you.
Decision at that time.
Okay, so I'm returning next Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Do you want me to restate that because it was the wrong date?
Sure, go ahead.
All right, I move that the Planning Board continue the public hearing for a special permit at 153 Turnpike Road to Tuesday, July 5, 2022, at 6:30 PM.
All in favor? All right. The hearing on this permit will be continued till...
I'll send you a copy.
Actually, next, it's next Tuesday, so it's just a week away. Not very far. All right, my, the second thing on the agenda is the continuation of the public hearing for 25-29 Research Drive Site Plan Application, and I understand we have a request for a continuance on this, but gentlemen, if you could state your name, and I saw the letter, but perhaps you could explain why you'd like to have a continuance talk.
Sure, thank you very much. So I am Marshall Gould, attorney for the applicant, and with me, we have Mike Fitzpatrick, who is with Samuel's company, and he is in charge of this Westboro project, and he's been attending all of the meetings, including department head meetings. So the first item, Hazel had asked a question at our very first opening of this hearing about what are we going to do for sewer, so I think we now have an answer that Mike can give you, and we'll be briefed tonight, I promise.
Yeah, we will, and so pleased to be back before the Board tonight. So first to start, the reason that we're asking for the additional time as well is that we were able to close out some comments and get some additional information so we can get back and respond to some engineering items as well as some transportation items. So we had to wait for some materials coming in from the lab and from a few other sources, so that's the reason for some more time. And then, as Marshall mentioned, when we left the last Planning Board meeting, we, our full consultant team was engaged and took a hard look again at the sewer because we had come in with a request for 166,000 gallons per day of sewer flow. It was made very clear that there is an overarching concern across the town as far as how that flow would be achieved and how it would be allocated, so it kicked off a series on our side where we pushed our team to take a look at the uses, the processes, how we'd set up the manufacturing, and how we'd design it so that we could actually reduce the overall need in sewer flow. That includes a few things related to the reuse of the washed-down water so it wouldn't go into the sewer. Instead, we'd recycle it and use it for toilets and flushing, that type of stuff, and some other changes to the design side. So we reduced our flow to 100,000 gallons per day, and then we had a series of meetings with town staff and officials about, now that we've reduced it to the 100,000, and we had allocated, the town had allocated 25,000 gallons per day for existing flow, so there was a net add of 75,000 gallons per day. And through the process of working with the town, there has been a commitment, and there's actually some, I don't know if it's been submitted yet to the Board, but we do have an email correspondence with Chris Payant, where we have now, it's been agreed that the town can provide the 75,000 gallons per day of additional sewer flow, and we have committed to working with the town on establishing an INI program and working with the town on how to best implement that, and specific to our project, what we would contribute towards the INI program.
Okay, and I understand, Marshall, that you've asked for a continuance till the 19th of July.
Yes, we have. So if I could just address one quick point before that.
Sure.
We were advised by various department heads and by Christie that there will be a small working group formed to discuss matters relevant to mitigation, and we, we have learned that the towns determine that the primary need that they are looking for assistance from us is concerning the INI study and implementation. So I'm hoping that this Board tonight will be able to agree to a working committee, and I guess it has to be two or less members of the Planning Board, plus certain other department people, as well as someone from our group. And what we would like to do between now and the 19th is hopefully have maybe one or two meetings with that small working group prior to the 19th. At the same time, the peer-reviewed engineers for the town, both on civil engineering and on the traffic side, due to vacations, they weren't able to get their work coordinated to be ready for tonight, and it's doubtful they will be ready for next week. So we believe that by the 19th, there should be substantial progress. So for that reason, we're requesting the continuance to the 19th, and also asking informally, I guess, if, when this committee is formed, if we could perhaps, whether through Jim or anybody that the Board advises, set up some one or two meetings with this working group so that we can make some progress between now and the 19th on more than just the engineering side.
Okay, I mean, that makes perfect sense to me. I think since our chairman is unable to be here tonight, and I know he'd like to be involved in this, and since our next meeting is the 5th already, perhaps you can coordinate with Jim and try to set up some meetings, and we'll figure out which members of the Planning Board would also be coming to those meetings.
That would be fine. Between now and the 5th, with the 4th of July weekend, I don't think anything would happen.
Exactly.
So that's fine.
While I have, while I have you through the chair, the, Mark Silverberg reached out to me today and said he would be available for a work session next week on either the 5th or the 7th. I know that's very close to the 4th, but you want to have this done before the 15th. So I don't know if anyone here on the Board is available for either the 5th or the 7th. We'd need the Town Engineer here, and I see that Lisa's in the back. I don't know if Lisa's available on either of those dates. If she's not, we'll fall back and try two other dates. But just while I have everybody here, I think it would be good to try and see if either of those two dates work for at least two members of the Board. Lisa, do either of those dates work for you? The 5th, Tuesday, the 5th of July, or the 7th of July? It would be a daytime meeting?
Yeah, I'd kind of like to be involved or...
I can do it.
You can do it.
Yeah.
Does that work for the applicant, either the 5th or the 7th?
Mike is going to be away on the 5th, but Peter Sugaredi's will be back, so he would be available, and we're not limited to the 5th or the 7th. Whatever day is best for the Board.
Okay.
We will make ourselves available.
Okay. Lisa, what works for you on either the 5th or the 7th? Nothing? I'm sorry?
I haven't scanned it.
Oh, you don't? I'll send an email then. How about, I'll send an email this week.
We'll be very flexible.
Okay. I mean, John seems to be interested in doing this, and I, perhaps he and Mark would be a good combination.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we could do that.
I'll send an email for the whole Board, though, and you two can respond.
Yeah, as I said, that, and nice to get you involved in that project. I've been involved somewhat, and I think it's always important to get us, you know, even if we have to spread it around, it's nice to have people attend the work sessions because it gives you much more of an insight into what's going on with a particular project. And this project's going to be going on for quite a while, so we're all going to have an opportunity, I think, to attend work sessions over the period.
Terrific.
Okay, all right. Could I have a motion to, do I need to read this letter into record from Marshall? I have an email from him.
I would just note the date that you received the email for the record.
Tuesday, June 28th, it was received, asking for a continuance of the public hearing until July 19. Could I have a motion?
I move that the Planning Board continue the public hearing for the Site Plan Review Application of 2529 Research Drive to Tuesday, July 19, 2022, at 6:30 PM, as requested by the applicant.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Marshall.
Thank you.
Enjoy your 4th of July.
Thanks very much.
All right, the next matter on our agenda is continuation of the public hearing for 151-155 Oak Street Site Plan Application and Decision. Mrs. Spectrum, just to...
Yes.
...advise everyone as to what it is, and could you introduce yourself for the record? And... And then we'll move forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Donahue from Fletcher-Tilton. On behalf of the applicant, with me is Randy Myron from Bowler Engineering, the Design Engineers. You might recall that when we were here last, we had pretty much closed out with regard to engineering issues. There was a question with regard to off-site work and what were the desires of the DPW. We were tasked to go back and try to resolve those matters, and with Mr. Robbins's help, have been able to get to a conclusion with regard to that, that is in a condition of approval, that's in the draft decision that we've had a chance to comment on.
Yes, I understand from Mr. Robbins that you did have a number of comments or changes on those, but did you have a chance to discuss those with him?
Yes. Madam Chairman, through you, Attorney Donahue and I discussed on the phone this afternoon the draft decision dated June 28, '22, which you received last week and the applicant also received last week. I thank you very much, Mark, for correcting the square footages in the application because we want to get that right. So that's basically in the description of the project. With the board's indulgence, if you allow me then to skip through the first three pages of the decision to the actual conditions of approval. And that begins on the bottom of page four.
All right. Now, do we need to close the public hearing?
No, I think you should keep the public hearing open. And then, once we've gone through the decision, close the public hearing and vote the decision as written with the changes that we make this evening.
All right.
So at the bottom of page four, we begin the conditions of approval. And the first condition basically says that prior to the certificate of occupancy, they need to deliver ASBIL plans that will be reviewed by the town's engineering department as well as the building commissioner prior to certificate of occupancy. That's a typical boilerplate condition that we require on all site plan reviews. Condition two, starting at page five at the top. There shall be no parking of construction vehicles or construction worker vehicles in the right-of-way of Oak Street at any time. All vehicles shall be parked interior of the project site. Number three, there shall be no loading or offloading of vehicles or materials in the right-of-way on Oak Street at any time. All activities involving loading or offloading of materials shall be conducted interior of the project site. Number four, should any building on the campus become vacant at any time, the owner shall be responsible for maintaining active water and electric service and ensure that all points of entry are secured. This requirement is necessary to maintain public safety for the site and its surrounding neighborhoods in the event of police or fire emergencies. Number five is lighting. And the first three, first four items are boilerplates. I won't bother to read them. The fifth item has to do with the applicant working to secure street lighting. And I discussed this with the applicant on the phone. As a result of my discussions with the Department of Public Works, the director, who advised me that they have reached out to National Grid, and National Grid will provide the necessary streetlights on the existing utility poles, and the town will pay for the annual usage fee. So that the applicant does not need to secure any of the lighting fixtures with National Grid, we will basically delete this item. So item E under number five would be deleted. And I invite the applicant to comment on that.
That's certainly good news for the applicant, to take that obligation off. And we appreciate Chris's efforts and also Jim's follow-up.
Number six, at the bottom of page five. Stormwater management plan, operations and management plan shall be updated to reflect the town engineer and the conservation director's comments. The plan shall identify where snow shall be stockpiled. Number seven, and we have comments from the applicant on this. In the event that weather conditions prevent the installation of landscape materials as shown on the plans prior to the request for occupancy, I had written that the applicant may request the planning board accept a security bond or the performance guarantee reasonable and acceptable, reasonably acceptable to the planning board to guarantee completion of the landscape elements. The planning board will determine the reasonable value of the security. The applicant has proposed that we delete those last two sentences and instead say that the applicant shall cause such landscape materials be installed prior to July 1 of the year following issuance of the certificate of occupancy. For discussion, the reason that I had written that a bond would be posted is in the event that they request occupancy during inclement weather months, generally the end of November through the end of March, not good planting time. And so in the past, the building commissioner, who's here, I see Fred is here, has allowed a security bond. But I understand why the applicant would wish to defer the landscaping through July of the following year. But if that were to be entertained, I'd want to make sure that the building commissioner were okay with that.
Through you, Madam Chair. Our reasoning was that the language as proposed in your provision talked about a security bond or other performance guarantee reasonably acceptable to the planning board. And our suggestion is that, given Spectrum's investment in this community, the fact that they are the direct operator on site, they are therefore different than a single property owner, that their commitment to do it by a date certain, the July 1st was somewhat arbitrary to just simply allow weather conditions to permit, if that wants to be expedited, but their commitment to do it and the condition of approval, which would obviously be enforceable as any other condition of approval, under these particular circumstances, would be adequate.
All right. Fred, do you have any comment on that?
Fred Lennar, Building Commissioner, Community Director. I'm generally okay with whatever the board wants to do with landscaping. Often, we like to have landscaping done as part of the occupancy permit, but for timing, we've done it with other projects. If they can't accommodate the time of year, as long as there's something in place to make sure it's done, I'm okay with it.
Right. That's my only concern, is I just want to make sure it absolutely gets done.
Yeah.
As far as that goes. So we don't take a performance bond or anything?
So the applicant is suggesting no. He's suggesting that we give him to the year following the occupancy, to July 1 of that following year. So Fred, he's proposing no performance bond?
Yeah. I suspect that Spectrum's not going anywhere. So I suppose I can hound them to death if they don't get it done, so.
Can attest that Mr. Lennar has those skills.
So I'm okay with it.
That's the bottom line. Thank you.
So you're willing to accept the revision?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll go with what was proposed by the applicant. Number eight has to do with fire protection. Item A says there shall be one fire hydrant located within 100 feet of the fire department connection. Item B, if the sprinkler control room of each building does not have direct exterior access, the applicant shall install a post indicator valve, a PIV, which is typical. Item C, all private fire hydrants shall be painted red. Number nine is hours of construction, and I'm glad to see that the applicant doesn't have a problem with this. This is good. The hours of construction operations include demolition and material processing activities for the project shall be limited to hours of 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 7:00 PM to 12:00 PM noon on Saturday. This includes starting and idling of vehicles and machinery. Sundays and legal holidays shall be days of no operation. Operation of construction equipment by a paid contractor outside the hours specified above shall be allowed only by written permission of the building commissioner.
All right. You said 7:00 PM, but you meant 7:00 AM. That's fine. When it first went through there. It was just, it was, you're misspoken, nothing to do with the language that's here.
But it's written properly.
It's correct here, but just for the record.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Item 10. The applicant shall comply with all applicable federal, state, local regulations, including but not limited to CMR Chapter 90, Section 16A, governing the idling of vehicles at the site. That basically says a vehicle should not idle more than five minutes. Item 11. During construction at the site, the applicant shall ensure that all areas adjacent to Oak Street be free and clear of construction debris and materials, and in other locations along Oak Street as may be necessary due to construction activities at the site, by means of a street sweeper with dust control water feature. That's just to keep the street clean. Item 12. Oak Street improvements. A, the applicant shall construct sidewalks along the entire frontage of 151 Oak Street. Campus property is shown on the project plans. And I had, and as necessary to promote public safety, the applicant requests that the last portion of that sentence, which is shown on your version, has stricken, and as necessary to promote public safety. I invite the applicant to explain the requested change.
Through you, Madam Chair. Our reasoning was that the applicant's going to construct the project in accordance with the plans, so we'll build the sidewalk as shown on the plans. We assume that that serves the purpose of promoting public safety without further reference to the phrase struck as potential for planned modification.
All right. My only question on that is that if, all right, if there's a problem with the sidewalk, for example, you know, when you get sidewalks and you get a lot of snow and ice, and then the sidewalks start to deteriorate, you will be responsible for fixing those?
Right. The sidewalk, correct me, Randy, but the sidewalk's on our property. It's our sidewalk, so it's not, it's not part of the public way, so it doesn't become a responsibility of butter. It's our walkway and will be fixed.
So these are interior sidewalks? In other words, they're not running along Oak Street?
No, it's running along Oak Street, but it's on the private property. It's not within the public way.
But can they be used by the public?
I'm fine with the, I'm fine with the proposed edit.
I can understand that. I mean, I can understand their move. I just want to make sure that, because obviously where the sidewalks are, they're going to be used by the public. I, you know, they may well be. So based on that, I just want to make sure that they are safe for the public to use, even though they're on your property, you are allowing the public to use the sidewalks. So I'm okay with taking that language out, but I just, I think that's the reason it was probably put in there on that basis.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Continue. Item B. The planning board recognizes that the installation of sidewalks will disrupt the paved roadway along Oak Street adjacent to the new sidewalk. The associated work will create additional weak points in the asphalt along the side of the road. Furthermore, the impact of construction vehicles entering and exiting the construction site significantly increased the rate of degradation of pavement longevity. Therefore, the applicant shall mill two inches and provide a pavement overlay the full width of Oak Street along the entire frontage of 151 to 155 Oak Street. This full width pavement overlay will serve to, thank you, Mark, extend the service life of the roadway that will benefit the applicant's patrons and Westboro residents that use Oak Street. Okay. Item 13 is simply a list of the comments that we received from town departments. Item 14 is public comments. We received none from the public. Items 15 and 16 are boilerplate to talk about modifying the site plan approval if necessary. And item 16 has to do with non-performance.
Is the board of any questions about the decision, draft decision? Are there any comments from anybody in the audience on this particular draft?
Yeah, if I may. Fred Lennar. When you asked me the previous question, I didn't take no account the engineering department. They may have a comment on that, too, because they also review the ASBILs. So in this case, if the landscaping's not done before the CFO, there may be an issue there, and I'll ask Lisa to comment on that if she could. She didn't hear part of that conversation.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, my only comment was, is if they don't have to put any kind of bond up, and we give the occupancy out, what do we have to make sure that they complete the work? I won't have any mechanism, at least through our department, to do that. So it's just something to consider.
Through you, if I might, Madam Chair. You have a provision, Section 16, on non-performance of a conditions of approval. The condition as we're proposing sets a date certain for completion of landscaping, if it's precluded because of weather conditions. So you'll have all the rights of any violation of a site plan approval, whether this one or any other one. That'll exist under both the regulations of the town and the state statute.
So.
Not sure what that means.
Well, it means that they, it means we can pull their permit.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
If they don't complete. That's essentially the bottom line.
It's a site plan approval. You're going to have a real hard time revoking a site plan approval. You can't deny a site plan approval. You can approve it with conditions. So I think you're going to have a real hard time revoking their approval. You'd have to hold a public hearing. I mean, you probably could, but we're talking about an established business and two buildings of an established campus. It's a private campus. If they don't install their landscape, it's only going to be to their own detriment, I think. And it's unusual for me to say this, Lisa, it really is. Why is he saying this? It's not like it's a residential subdivision, or it's a project that's going to be turned over to the town, where we're going to own the roads, or we're going to own the sidewalk. It's a private campus. Sorry to side with you, Mark, on this one.
I don't feel uncomfortable with this, only because it is a private campus. It's not like a housing development where you've got neighbors and people that are living in there, that a lack of landscaping will affect how it looks. I think, at this point, I mean, I'm quite frankly, I'm comfortable with it because of the longstanding business and the way your campus is looked. And my assumption, hopefully, is that such will continue as it is.
If I may. So, again, I'm not necessarily worried about it, but the only thing I would ask is that there has to be a certain amount of retention, it's not the right word, there has to be a certain amount of landscaping, although it's grading and retention of the grade so it doesn't wash out and those type of things for the certificate. So even if the landscaping plantings are not completed, there still has to be an establishment of grade, so that we don't have problems with washout and whatnot. So I'd at least want to make sure that that's completed to some level. Whether, you know, put down scrub grass or whatever, whatever it does take so it doesn't wash out, especially not to Oak Street, that would be an issue. That's the only thing I would risk.
Yeah, that would be an issue.
I'm sure between Bowler Engineering, their site review, and Masialo Construction, with their expertise, the site will be fully stabilized, one of certificate occupancies asked for. If it's in the winter, it makes little sense to plant things that won't get it through the winter. So I'm certainly thinking this is more plantings than that there's going to be open fields of excavation out there.
And I, I mean, obviously, I would assume that you will have to stabilize it whether or not you're planting prior to that time. So it's the stabilization, which is what we'd be looking for in the time between you essentially finish the construction and the time the planting can come. So I would say, you know, that would all work together so that you would have to stabilize over the winter anyway. All right. Jim, do you have any more comments?
No, I have no comments. Before you move to the decision, I'll make sure you close the public hearing. I wrote you a motion to do both.
But I wanted to continue. John, do you have any questions?
No.
Peter.
So on the stabilization, should we put a deadline in that that needs to be, or we're just not going to provide the permit if it's not stabilized?
If I might, if.
Yeah.
This is a hard scenario to picture in real life, that a site that's prepared for a certificate of occupancy hasn't achieved exterior stabilization. But if that were to occur, it's probably a basis for the building inspector to not issue a certificate of occupancy at all. I distinguish that from landscape materials, which I interpret to be perennials, shrubs, trees, and things of that nature, which don't go to the essence of the site, but only improve its aesthetics. So if you want to put installation of aesthetic landscape material, and if that clarifies it, there's no dispute here that the site needs to be stable before we start having patients show up there.
I think that's something I was concerned about. I mean, as far as the plantings, when I read it, it meant to me, it meant shrubbery. I mean, when I read it, that's what it meant to me, was shrubbery, not, and trees. I mean, if you're going to put trees in, and I assume you have a planting plan that is.
Part of the site plan.
Yeah, that'll be part of your site plan as it is. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to comment on this application? All right. Lisa, you comfortable?
Okay.
Fred? Any questions? Any questions, John?
I just want to make sure that the final language then is as proposed by the applicant.
All right, well then, could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move that the planning board close the public hearing for the site or plan review application of Spectrum Health at 151-155 Oak Street.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor? All right, the public hearing is closed. The second motion would, I move the planning board approve the site plan review application of Spectrum Health at 151-155 Oak Street dated June 28, 2022, with the revisions made at this evening's meeting, you want to say by the applicant, Jim, you want to add to that?
No, any revisions, that covers, are any questions that we might have had as well. Second.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Peter, do you have any comments?
No comments.
John?
No.
I have no comments at this particular time on this. I'm sure as neighbors, we can all work well together and get this accomplished, and you'll be able to move your headquarters out here, which we all look forward to. I have one question, I'm not sure if it's in order or not, but I did ask, I don't know, a month or so ago, about people wandering along the street, you may remember that I asked that question, I never did get an answer about it, I didn't know whether there was a, these are people that have left their, finished up their term or whatever there.
Actually, they're not, Madam Chair. I did have a chance with Frank Hight, who's here, to explore this issue with Spectrum. Patients who are being discharged at the end of their regular stay in some fashion are either picked up at the facility or transported to either a location where they're going to end up, or they go to a transportation center in some fashion, a bus station or not. There are individuals who discharge themselves against medical advice. They are not transported because they are simply walking off in some fashion. And those, we really don't have any control because they are free people, and if they decide to leave, they can leave, and often that's what they end up doing. So those cases are often people against medical advice who have discharged themselves. Often that happens in a fairly disorganized fashion, it's not a lockdown facility, so people can walk off campus if that's their election in some fashion. But the patients who are being discharged, we do safely transport them to another location, either by vehicles or by third-party Ubers and the like. Frank, I want to add to that.
Thank you, that's very helpful, I just, that's a real clarification, because people do ask us.
Frank?
Frank Hight, Spectrum Health Systems. I do want to add to what Mark said, and it is our policy to notify the Westboro Police if any client chooses to self-discharge like that and not accept our help and our rides, so the police are notified in every instance that somebody decides to start walking down Oak Street.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that.
Frank Hight, H-I-G-H-T, Spectrum Health Systems. Thank you.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
I think we need a vote on the motion.
We, yeah, right. All right, are there any other questions about the motion, Board? All right, are we ready to vote? All in favor? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. All right, next on our agenda is an informal discussion regarding the earth-moving permit at 25 Gleason. All right, and if you could introduce yourselves for the record. And this is an informal discussion, there will be no action tonight, we're just hearing a discussion of this particular matter, which I understand has been ongoing.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Ian Adams, I'm an attorney with Drowan, Tacio and Morgan in Hingham. I'm here tonight with Mike Scott from Land Design Collaborative, Brian Washington from Milford Stone, and Brian Ward, who's representing the Ward family with respect to the Ward property. So we're here this evening mainly to catch the Board up with respect to activity that's going on up with the Conservation Commission, and why we're in the process of applying for an earth-moving permit, fairly narrowly tailored at this time. And Mike has been in conversations with the town planner to essentially establish the best path going forward for handling this site generally, but more specifically in terms of achieving the mitigation measures that the Conservation Commission has asked for. Without further ado, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Peter, can you see?
Yeah, I can, oh, yeah, I can look both ways.
Okay, Mike Scott from Land Design Collaborative. Mr. Robbins asked that I bring copy of some plans so that the members would understand where the site is located, and we could give a brief history of the property and what the intent of the earth-moving permit will be, which we will file this week if we have the go-ahead from Jim tomorrow. So what you're looking at is an aerial view of the Ward property, which is, is this area bounded by this kind of odd shape. Gleason Street at the bottom, up in the corner, sorry, this is Route 9 and Route 20, so Route 9 running this way, that's the YMCA, if you're familiar with the Borough's Branch, Target, I certainly know that site, and then the former Barbarian land. So what occurred about two years ago now, year and a half ago now, was that the Ward's operation, they've been mining and processing soil materials here for decades, they entered this part of the site, so you'll see sort of that grayish line, that's a wetland area. And they cleared and grubbed the wetland, and they ended, began removing, and I say "they" in combination with Milford Stone from Milford, Mass, began picking rock off this slope and stockpiling at the bottom of the hill. And eventually, there was a determination made that they didn't have permission to do that from this Board, and they didn't have any, obviously, permission from the Conservation Commission. So we went out there, the work was, the site had been cleared and grubbed, and they had been operating and processing some material. So just again, for reference, the green property is the Ward's property, it's 60-plus acre, the town's well site is here, that was evident in the aerial, and I was gonna, so this was the plan that was filed with the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission determined that through prior filings and some of the work that we had done for the Wards and Milford Stone, that this wetland C, as it was delineated back in 2008 or 2009, had been cleared. So we prepared these set of drawings for the Conservation Commission to, in conjunction with Ecotec, a wetland consultant out of Worcester, to restore the wetland area. So we're gonna be looking at this part of the site on the next sheets, which are gonna turn, so that north is to the left of the sheet, and it's gonna be a 40 scale, so it's kind of jarring, plus it's the aerial photo. So what you're looking at now is the green line is the, is the wetland C, there's a stream channel that runs out to the south, again, at this point Gleason Street is on the right, and Route 9 is up to the top of the sheet, and this is the town's well site, water treatment facility. And so you can see the area here that had been wooded and a wetland has been cleared, and you can see a large stockpile of rock that had been scraped off of this slope, as well as some other stockpiles a little farther to the north. This roadway here had actually been in existence for at least 15 to 20 years, maybe even 40 or 50 years, and it continued off to the north to the land of, I don't know, that wasn't... Barbarians or Caprell, yeah, right, it joins the Barbarian property. And then it continues out to the south, as well as this road had been historically utilized, and there had been a road through this part of the site, but this part of the site had remained wooded. So again, it was cleared, they had stripped the topsoil, basically, I think that's the...
That's the windrow.
Yeah, that's the windrow of this, of the, right here is your topsoil stockpile. Stumps had been relocated here, and they get, they began pulling material off that wall, which is a pretty steep wall of rock. We prepared this plan, which shows a temporary sediment basin on the northern end of the site, and another one on the southern end of the site, as well as a channel to bring stormwater around the windrow here of the topsoil. So that all the runoff coming from this part of the site is either diverted into this sediment basin and then around, or runoff that gets into the wetland before it's stabilized ends up in this sediment basin, and then overflows through a stabilized channel and flows off-site to the south. And in conjunction with this drawing, this was a plan demonstrating that the 50 feet outside the wetland would be reforested, and the wetland would be stabilized in conjunction with the report that was prepared by Ecotec, Art Allen, the wetland scientist. We did a number of test holes and determined that, essentially what they did was strip the top and subsoil off, and they were within a few inches of groundwater. Modeling was just a few inches below ground grade here. So the theory is bringing the topsoil back out of the windrow, placing it carefully, planting it, that the groundwater's there, that the wetland should revegetate itself, provided it doesn't continue to see a lot of stormwater flowing through it from the north. And this is what the Commission has required through an enforcement order. Subsequent to that meeting with the Conservation Commission, Mr. Leonardo directed the Wards to get an earth-moving permit for this work. So before the work can commence, which is, entails removing the riprap that's presently stockpiled, it's clear in the photo, this, this material, which is, I've estimated is around 5,000 yards of material, to get that out of the wetland, utilize some of it for stabilizing the outflow, stabilizing this channel, stabilizing this outflow, and then removing the rest of it from the site. And then taking some of this, taking this material and some of the compost that Mr. Ward is producing here, mixing it in accordance with the Ecotec report, and replacing it in this area, which is roughly 70,000 square feet, so an acre and three-quarters or so, and then performing the planting. So the scope of the earth-moving, or earth-moving permit itself would be, again, to remove this riprap off-site or out of the wetland, process it to be utilized as riprap, taking the loam, mixing it with the compost, spreading that back within the wetland area, and then coming in and supplementing the perimeter and the wetland with plantings, which all are detailed in Mr. Allen's report, which I will include in the application. There's no need for 5,000 yards of rock material to stabilize this, either of these basins, so that material, as the application would read, would, would be hauled off-site to either a construction site that needs it, or to the Milford Stone property in Milford, Mass. But again, it has to come out of the wetland for the work to occur. So that's what we will be filing, or that's the intent, but as a lot of, just came out of my head, and I'm sure there may be some questions, and Mr. Ward is here to talk about what he's done in the past, what he intends to do with the property, and Mr. Washington in the blue is with Milford Stone, who might be able to answer questions about operations and how that would work, if there's any interest before we prepare the filing.
So essentially, what you're doing is dealing with a situation which was something that should not have been done without permits, and you're, so you're now, it's a rehabilitation, is what the present plan is according to a direction, a directive from the Conservation Commission, is that correct? All right, so there was a violation filed against?
The landowner.
The landowner, for the work that was done there.
That's correct. And the season to do this would obviously have just passed, or would be in the fall, so the ideal operating, the ideal, ideal time at this point to undertake this work is in September and October. Be ready to plant at that period, which, which means getting the material out.
My concern is, I don't get why we're allowing them to remove the material from the site. I understand it's a, they're gonna make a financial gain probably removing that material that should not have left the site, it shouldn't have been, it shouldn't have been moved at all? So I, that's, that's the issue I'm having, is removing the material that should not have been removed from the site.
No, the material that...
No, this material here, right here, I have, I understand it's from the cliff face.
Right.
So now they're gonna profit from that material coming off that cliff face when they really shouldn't have been handling that material at all?
You're right, can I, through the chair, Pete, you're right. They need to restore the wetlands. In order to remove the additional stone from the site, or work the cliff, if I can use that in kind of layman's terms, work the high area to remove ledge for other material, they're gonna need to file a new notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. That's what the Commission is gonna want from them before they do any further excavating. What they need from us is to be able to move the material that they've stored on-site to restore the wetlands. So they need an earth-moving permit from us to restore the wetlands. However, when they file for that special permit, there'll be a public hearing, and it'll require comments from the Conservation Commission. And the Conservation Commission, I'm sure, will tell you about the violation and what they want them to do to restore the area. So they're under a notice from, a violation notice from the Conservation Commission, and they're going to need to restore the wetlands, but in order to do that, they need to get an earth-moving permit from us. It's sort of a chicken and egg thing, they need to fix the wetlands first, but in order to do that, they need to get an earth-moving permit from us. In that permit, you can condition whether or not they can take the rock off the site, which is what they want to do in their quarry operation. I would say we need to follow the lead of Conservation Commission in this.
That I agree with, because I don't know enough about the ins and outs of restoring wetlands at this point. And so, at this particular time, then, if we, I mean, they could, they could file for the earth-moving permit at any time, and they don't need our opinion, I mean, they don't need our approval one way or another.
That's correct, but I asked them to come in and explain the historical circumstances of the site, and what it is they need to do before they file for anything. Because once they file, they're gonna be requesting a public hearing, and you're not gonna be able to talk about it informally, and then you'll have the neighbors in here. I think it's best that you understand the project before they file.
I mean, I'm, I kind of feel a lack of information, the fact that I'd really like to know what Conservation has to say about this, before I, you know, feel confident in making any decision on it.
Right, and you can't make a decision until they file anyway, and you're going to receive Conservation Commission's input once they file.
So this is just information tonight, without any, we can ask questions, but we're not making any decision one way or another?
Correct.
Okay. John?
Yeah, what's the owner's game plan with the site for the future of it?
That's why we came in, right? So I'm gonna go back to the first picture, if this helps. So this, again, the bold dark line here is the boundary of their entire property.
Yep.
They've been operating from about, well, from about this part of the site to the south, as well as this part of the site, for decades. It was this area over here that was the newer violation. So they, Brian, if you want to speak to it, but they, he runs a loam operation, and they also receive asphalt, brick and concrete, but Brian can talk to you about that.
Yeah, Brian Ward, my father owns it, I'm representing him. It's been a pit, you know, forever, where Westboro Village is, that was the front part. You know, and to be honest, we're working with Milford Stone to try to come up with the best use for the site. You know, there's a lot of compost and stuff there, I want to just, right now, clean it up, you know, get it, you know, the concrete and everything, you know, so it looks nice. You know, and maybe where the hill is there, it's not really buildable, so we'll probably have to remove some stone so we can maximize the footprint, you know, to develop the land more efficiently. Because that hill, you can't tell by the picture, I mean, it's, it's really steep.
It's big.
You know, and there's no way to build there unless you cut that down.
Right.
So there's a process that I've discussed with Mike about this, and so Brian, you and I've talked over the years about the site. They need to first act on the Conservation Commission's order to restore the wetlands, then they'll come back to us again if they're gonna take any material off the site. And Conservation is gonna want it to proceed that way. Restore the wetlands first, and then if they are going to do any future excavation, they'll need to file a new notice of intent with Conservation and a new earth-moving permit with us to take anything off the site.
So at this point, they will not be removing any material from the site?
If they remove any material, they'll have to file a new notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. This is only for restoration of the wetlands.
So essentially, they're just moving material around within the site? So essentially, they're just moving material around within the site. They're not taking any away--
Correct.
--or anything. And if they want to take it away, they have to come back.
Which I understand. So on this site, where are you going to move that material that's in that huge area?
So that area that you're looking at is here. So I didn't, I did state, and they are requesting to take excess material from the wetland off the property. So that will be part of the request. If the answer is it can't be done, they would be stockpiled somewhere to the north, I imagine, which I can go back to that area.
And obviously, if it's stockpiled, it can't be in an area which would affect the wetland.
Of course.
The wetland area, out of the buffer zone, obviously.
Yeah. So this entire portion of the site is out of the wetlands. You can see the wetland buffer zone in yellow here. There is a wetland that continues off-site, and I may have it. All right. Yeah. So you can see the green, well, I can see it, but if you can see the green, that's the wetland system on this part of the property. So you can see there's a small wetland area that just cuts a buffer.
Can you highlight where it was disturbed?
This wetland sea, this is, we were looking at that level. That's the area.
That's it? Okay.
Yeah. That's what you see in the aerial photo.
And do you have to replace it where it was, or can you put it in a different portion?
No, it's been staked in its same location. It was survey-staked. We went to the Conservation Commission two weeks ago, I think. It was staked, set by GPS in the field, same flag number, everything, the way it was marked out. The wards had had it flagged in 2008 or 2010. We were provided that data.
And the Conservation Commission did take aerial photos with the stakes in place.
Sherry Wood, the agent, has seen that. So it will be restored as well as a 50-foot forested or wooded buffer.
And what was the square footage of the wetlands?
Around 70,000 square feet.
I guess my question is, if it was staked in 2008--
Flagged originally, yes.
Yeah, flagged originally. So how did, I know things happened, but how, you kept on--
When they were clearcutting this, there was a big machine. So it wasn't like, you know, there was a machine in there that could probably cut three or four acres in a day.
Oh, okay.
You know, and it was just, I mean, you know, I should have probably been there. I mean, we made a mistake and we want to correct it. You know, going forward, I'm going to make sure that, you know, I'm there and that something like this doesn't happen again.
That's fair.
So the Conservation Commission feels that this is a restorable wetland?
Based on the report from Art Allen and the soil testing, the answer is yes. The upstream hydrology hasn't changed. It's still a wooded slope. The terrain, there hasn't been significant earthmoving, the best we can tell based on historic survey data that we received from, through the wards, and also there's available topographic information through NOAA and USGS. And it's pretty flat, and nothing, they certainly did not appear to have made major grade changes. And I think it was stripped. In fact, as you walk from the upstream north end to the southern end, you can actually see sort of a shelf where they pulled the top and subsoil out, and it's about two feet deep, and then you have that almost sheer face. So it's pretty clear they pulled the stumps out, and that was it. So the wetland scientist believes this can be restored.
I think Fred had a comment. Fred, I saw your hand up there.
Yeah. Fred Leonardo. So I will provide comments when it comes in formally, but just informally for a frame of reference, there's been various violation notices over the years for this particular property, including my predecessor and the predecessor before them. So this has been kind of an ongoing problem. It's not a new problem. One thing I will recommend to the board when it comes into it formally is that there's some kind of establishment for some of the, what's going on in the future as well, not just the operation that's going to be proposed here. And basically, that'll go to hours of operation, routes of delivery, because the, and I'm not saying that any of these things can't be done, but some of their long-term plans are to continue composting projects out there and things like that. So I feel that there still needs to be some jurisdiction on that. So it's not just this project, is my point. And some of that's due to the back-and-forth that's gone on for the last 20 years on that property. And there's some co-mingling to what's going on there between that and the Boston Hill property. So I want to make sure that gets straightened out and that we have some clear guidelines going forward, just as a frame of reference. And again, nobody's asking me to do anything tonight. I was just kind of get a basis for what has been going on out there for a number of years. So more recently, why they're here is because they basically put a cease and desist in the last year or so, to make sure that things weren't going forward until we had some kind of decision from the planning board to, you know, again, to hours of operation, routes of delivery and things like that. It's not to prohibit anything they want to do necessarily, to be clear on that. So that's kind of the background on that.
Thank you. That was very helpful.
If I could, Madam Chairman, then I think we need to rely heavily on what Fred's recommendation is for a process going forward.
Right.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, I don't have any more comments at this particular time, because I--
If I may respond briefly to what Mr. Leonardo said, our only concern and the reason that we're trying to keep at least this stage of evaluating the earthmoving application, we want to keep it relatively narrowly tailored and not expand it to the rest of the operations. The planning board would not see jurisdiction over those operations based on moving forward with the earthmoving permit that is narrowly tailored to this restoration work. I mean, we're trying to get this through the Conservation Commission as efficiently as possible and begin the restoration work, but it doesn't need to happen at the same time as the conversation regarding the rest of the operations on the site.
No, I understand that. But and the fact that we, I mean, you can file your permit at any time. I mean, it's essentially, you've come to us to kind of just bring us into the picture as to what may come to us in the future, or which should come to us in the future. And consequently, you came here really just for information, and then it's up to you to go ahead and file your permit. And at that point, then we will begin to get the input from Conservation and so forth. So my feeling is, you know, it's up to you to file your, you know, to file your request for the permit, and then working with the Building Department and Conservation, those would be the next steps would move forward. Is that correct, Jim?
Yes.
Yeah. So I guess I just, it's not even a hearing, so I just will thank you for coming in tonight to, you know, keep us informed of what's going on. And hopefully, this wetland will be restored. And I think we're all concerned about wetlands at this time. And so any conservation and restoration of wetlands which have been disturbed makes a great deal of difference to our community.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I mean, that was just a thing, you know, just because my hands are kind, like, were kind of tied to a degree, because, I mean, we can't fix it till, you know, we do, you know, like he was saying, the chicken or the egg. We, you know, we want to fix this wetland as soon as possible.
Right.
That's why we're trying to streamline this and do it the most efficient.
Well, you can apply for your permit at any time. I mean, we have no jurisdiction over you--
Yeah.
--because you can go ahead and apply for the permit. And then it's working with Conservation and coming back to us and working through the process. So we appreciate you coming in to tell us what the situation is--
All right. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
--we didn't suddenly get an earthmoving permit and try to figure out what to do with it. So anyway, I think we'll move forward accordingly.
Thank you. And through the chairman, we will be relying heavily, though, on the information that we get from Conservation--
Yeah, I understand.
--and the Building Commissioner.
They've been working very closely, Sherry, and thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. All right. The next matter is a public hearing for site plan application for 190-212 Oak Street. And I have a notice, I believe here I need to read. Let's see. Pursuant to the rules and regulations relative to site plan approval under Section 1240 of the zoning bylaws of the town of Westboro, the Westboro Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 28, 2022, at 6:30 in the Great Hall on the second floor of the Ford Municipal Building at 45 West Main Street, Westboro, Mass., and a site plan to construct two three-story multifamily buildings with one building containing eight two-car garages, surface parking, and an onsite septic system on the corner property at the intersection of Oak Street and Milk Street. The proposed project consists of clearing, construction of two buildings, grading, drainage, lighting, paving, and other site improvements associated with the proposed development plan. Any person wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place noted above. A copy of the application and plan are available for review in the Westboro Planning Board offices at 45 West Main Street, Westboro, Mass., and the Town Clerk's office at 34 West Main Street, Westboro, Massachusetts during regular business hours. This is published in the Telegram Gazette on May 17 and May 24.
Madam Chairman, for your information, the certified abutters list has been confirmed. So proper notice was given.
Thank you.
Sorry.
All right. If you could introduce yourself to the board and then describe the project.
Thank you very much. My name is Barry Yatcherson. I work for WDA Design.
My name is Jerry Haja. I also work for WDA Design Group as well.
Quick question. Jim had mentioned certifies. Do you guys take the green cards?
Oh, yeah, sure. If you give them to Kristen, that would be great.
All right. This project, as my colleague here, pull up some plans, is to develop a parcel of property that's located over off of Milk Street and Oak Street, next door to the courthouse. It's a 2.1-acre parcel. We've since have gone through, back in March, and met with all the department heads and taken some of their feedback and produced the design plans that you see here. It is located in the town's Garden Apartment Complex zoning district. It is intended to create 12 housing units. Six of them will be two bedroom. The other six are intended to be one bedroom. And that is a requirement based on the sewer system that's going to be used to dispose of their waste. It will not be connected up to the town's municipal system. It's my understanding, I came into the project a little late, but I'm in the understanding that the septic system has been submitted and approved, and then we did some additional modifications of changing the pumps and chambers. So we've got to just bring that back to them for Board of Health approval.
So you don't have full Board of Health approval yet?
Apparently not. It's my understanding, we just need to submit the, resubmit the drawings with revised locations, final plan. But as far as the engineering and design and system components and everything that's been approved, verbally approved, I guess, is what you would say. The intention is to meet the affordable housing. It's my understanding, some of the units will be rental, probably some of the single-family units, and also the two bedrooms will be purchased or sold off. As I mentioned before, the utilities will be municipal water, gas, electric, cable TV, CCTV, with the private onsite septic system. There will be stormwater collection, treatment, detention, and mitigation for stormwater onsite. The garages, I think, was just slightly different recently than what was in our initial application. And if it's our report, I got a little handout, unless, Jerry, you can pull it up?
It's still loading for some reason.
Thank you. Is this what you're trying to pull up here?
Yes.
Okay. No problem. No problem.
Thank you.
What it's showing is, there's two buildings that are proposed on the property. There's, and they are oriented on the property as they are shown on this drawing, with the larger building, building one will be eight individual units. The top one will be a single-family townhouse. It'll all be a three-story building with parking on the first level and living and bedroom space above. And on building two, there's four units, all single-family, and with the change of parking. Clay Schmook was able to get a couple of the units with additional parking garages that we, that weren't part of the initial package.
Still looking for some reason?
Speedy computer. So we can revise our application for you on that. I think that's the method that we go by to update that. This is what he's showing you. There's a rendition of the property. On the left-hand side is Milk Street, running east to west, Route 135. And on the top and right-hand side is Oak Street that runs up to the entrance to the District Courthouse, which is the big building you're seeing there. One comment that we received during our initial presentation with the select board was, hey, where'd you go? There you go. That's fine. Was concerns in regards to where the driveway entering the property and whether there's enough stopping in site distance and stuff, and concerns of people coming up. There is a slight hill that you enter as you come off of Milk, going up to the right. And we do have 180, 180, 189 feet of stopping in site distance. And for that area, I believe we're somewhere between 150 to 170 feet required stopping site distance. So we're in a good place for that. Coming down the right-hand side on Oak, making a turn, is over 300 feet of site stopping distance, so, which is well above what we require. On that entrance, also brought up during the select board, was a concern regarding, why don't you combine it with the entrance to the courthouse? We don't think that's a good idea. It provides too much ambiguity between ownership of the driveway entrances, who's going to maintain, who's going to clear it, and so forth. We feel that we're in a location now that is adequate and provides a safe entrance and egress and enough stopping in site distance, especially with the intersection down on the left-hand side. It also provides, we've done a SWPAS analysis for the fire trucks, and in our opinion, I think we make that work without the fire truck hitting a curb. Still waiting on some feedback on that. On the, as you point to the top, Jerry, of the house over to the left-hand side, we lost you. There's a snow area there, where a good-sized area where plowing of snow and storage. When you go to the existing materials plan, C2.
Loads, I think.
Too big of a file on it.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, go to the green one. On the lower right, where the signal car is, there's also a storage area there for plowing and-- plowing and putting of snow. The large area at the top right-hand side is the septic system. And as you follow straight down and to the left, there'll be the sewer we'll collect at the bottom of the buildings. There'll be a pump station and/or pump chamber and collection area for wastewater to go into and pumped up into the field. There, based on the zoning tables and requirements for open space, which is another concern one had had, whether we had enough, I believe we are required to provide 1,500 square feet per unit. Based on the area that you see there, we're providing a little over 4,000 square feet As you enter the site in the driveway, and it's, I had my plans, it's basically a one-way counterclockwise. As you come down on that first corner, there will be a guardrail along that left edge. As you can see, there's some brown dots pointed out. And then on that, it'll drop about four feet on a retaining wall to maintain the flat surface on the top. Also in front of those two cars in that area is a lower spot where we'll have catch basins and a treatment unit. So any groundwater or stormwater will get collected there into a pretreatment and then into a large storage detention, below-grade detention facility. There's also planned to be put another one between the two buildings. It'll do similar. It'll also go into a stormwater treatment system via a couple of catch basins and then into a detention basin. It'll then flow down where it's curser and out in between, just over the top, a little higher, Jerry, up in that area. And it flows into, into the ground or on top of the surface. And the proposal is to put a couple of sedimentation basins, surface-mounted, just to squelch any, any water that is there. Further on down is two, three, a little back history. Oak Street used to come down and cut across that lower portion of the particular property. And they used to have these drop inlets that fell off to either side of the road. They're currently now concrete basins with a concrete drop inlet that are very large. We haven't been able to get access into them yet, but hopefully soon. So they were primarily collecting the stormwater off the road into the sides. They collected the stormwater, connected to each, and then flowed out to the right down into the wetlands beyond.
Can I interrupt you through the chair?
Yes.
Barry, do you have an existing conditions plan?
Yes.
And a proposed conditions plan? Because this plan doesn't show any of the things you're addressing.
What was submitted to the planning board, I mean, to the, your office? Did you receive a full set of plans?
Yes, yes, I did. Yes, I did. But I asked for an electronic presentation.
Right. Well, I know, because, I mean, what I'm seeing in front of me tells me nothing.
Right.
Sorry, I'm trying.
It's loading still very blurry for some reason. Don't know why.
I mean, it gives me no idea about what's going on. And also, it gives the public no idea what's going on, because all I saw was some drawings that didn't mean anything.
His paper plans submitted showed all those things, but, but for the board's information at a presentation, I need to see the existing and the proposed conditions.
Yeah, I'm, I'm seeing nothing.
Can you zoom in, Jerry?
And we have no comments from any other department yet.
We do, we do. I'll, I'll read them when you're ready for me.
I'll read them.
So on this picture, where's the, you said there's private sewer. Where is the private sewer?
That black area right there.
Oh, right, black area. And then where is the trash? Is it?
Trash will be down here. That's where the dumpster would be located.
Okay.
Still not zooming?
And how big are these units? What are they consisted of? I mean, are they one-story units? It says one-bedroom flat stacked, two stories, and it means it's a two-story unit. You've got a one-bedroom townhouse, two stories, two-bedroom townhouse, three stories. I mean, I, you know.
So the left side here is all going to be three stories.
Right.
The right side's going to be two stories.
And I'd like to see what they look like. I mean, I have no idea what I'm looking at.
No, I agree.
And interiorly, I have no idea what's there.
Elevations would be nice.
Very helpful.
At this point, do you think we should just continue until the 19th, so we can actually see the presentation?
Yeah.
Does it make sense to read some of the comments?
Yeah, I have all the comments for your, for your record. I'd like to read in the dates and the letters that we did receive. And I'd like to note also that the town engineer has not submitted her comments yet. And she spoke to me before the hearing this evening. She's going to need more time. I know you're going to continue the hearing anyway, and that you'd like to have a work session with the applicant. But we did receive multiple comment letters. And I actually have a bunch of questions that I'd like to ask that I would like addressed for the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I, at this point, I feel like I'm wasting the board's time, because we don't have the information we need. I'm not seeing the plans. I want to see the comments from the departments. I know you have comments. I know there needs to be a, a work session about this particular project. I know that our chairman is very interested in attending a work session on this particular project. And at this point, quite frankly, I'd like to hear the comments from Jim. But other than that, I, you're wasting my time at this point.
I agree.
I'm getting nothing out of this tonight at all. And maybe, Jim, you could go ahead and...
So a couple overall comments. So the plans that were submitted, paper plans and digital plans that were submitted to my office, adequately show grading, drainage. There's questions about the shared septic that came from the Board of Health. But I want you to know that he did have a complete submittal. Right now, for him to make a presentation, for some reason, his digital presentation's not showing up. But you received comments from the Board of Health dated June 6 that had to do with the shared septic system, questions about making sure there's a homeowners association to adequately maintain the shared septic system. And the board has these comments as well. Also, comments from the Board of Selectmen dated June 15, having to do with security on the site, driveway access, parking, sidewalks. Then you have a comment from the Conservation Director dated June 16, having to do with the existing conditions, the design points for drainage, the temporary construction, settling basins, the Mass. EP checklist for stormwater report, and the operation and maintenance plan. You have a letter from the Building Commissioner dated June 22 with numerous comments about the actual design plans, layout material plans, grading and drainage plans, overall comments. Then you have a letter from the Fire Chief dated June 23 with three comments of particular note. You and I discussed this, Barry, the other day. His comment regarding the sweat path says the EAP has reviewed it and believes that it does not meet the town's specifications. So you're going to want to reach out to the Fire Chief on that. One comment from the Police Chief dated June 23. He has no comments, the Police Chief. My comments have to do with line of sight and line of sight stopping distance for the driveway. I'm going to want to make sure that you meet the ASHTO standards for line of sight along Oak Street and that you meet the ASHTO standards for stopping distance, stopping site distance along Oak Street. Also, on the plan, I have a question about your frontage and making sure that you meet the setback for both Oak Street and Milk Street. I know you meet it for Milk Street, but do you meet the 100-yard, I'm sorry, the 100-foot setback on Milk Street? It's not clear from the plans. We can discuss that, but that obviously affects your placement of your building.
Clarification, it's a 100-foot setback from Milk?
That's what zoning requires, yeah.
Jim, were those your comments?
Those are my comments for now.
Right. My suggestion is, at this point, is that I think, obviously, these questions need to be answered. There needs to be a, a work session between a couple members of the planning board and the applicant to go over all the questions that have been raised, to make sure that you understand what they are and we understand and we know that when the information's going to come. Because I think at this point, we don't have enough information to even proceed any further, as far as I'm concerned. And so what I would like to do is just continue this public hearing until the 27th of July, the 20, I'm sorry.
19th.
19th of July. And in the meantime, you arrange with Jim, and he'll find a couple members of the planning board. I know Mike wants to be included in. Peter, would you like to be included?
Yeah, I can do it, yeah.
All right, so it would be Peter and Mark that would attend the, the planning session. And I think probably, Jim, there's some other members of the department that should be there also.
Yeah, I would like the town engineer at the, at the session, as well as the Conservation Director and the Building Commissioner. So Barry, would you send me an email tomorrow suggesting several dates in the next two weeks prior to the 19th that we could meet?
Yep.
And again, the reason that I ask about the site distance is, the Selectmen raised a question about the location of the driveway. They were obviously concerned about traffic along Oak Street, because, as you know, there's, there's a vertical curve there in the road and a horizontal curve as you leave the intersection of Milk and Oak Street, and you turn right, head to head towards the courthouse. They want to make sure, and I want to make sure, that you have adequate line of sight along Oak Street and you have a stopping distance line of sight that meets the ASHTO standards.
All right, so you got your homework cut out for you, I think, at this particular time, and work with Jim to set up a date between now and the 19th. And it may be that we'll have to continue the hearing beyond that if we don't have all the answers prior to that time. I don't want to move forward with this project until we know exactly what is happening with it and we have sufficient information to make some reasoned questions and work with the developer on this. So I would like a motion, I'd just move that the planning board continue the public hearing for the site plan review application for 190-212 Oak Street to Tuesday, July 19 at 6:30 PM.
I second that.
All right, is there any discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, the hearing on this matter is continued to that July 19.
I second that.
And the final matter on our agenda is the upstate and the status of Village Combs, Shammy, and Farouk. You sent us pictures. I looked at them. I think we all saw them. Looks like the plantings are coming along, but obviously, they have got to be watered. And if they're not watered, they're to be replaced.
You saw the deal back?
I, well, yes. Now is the end of June. What are they going to look like in August? I want them to look healthy, green, trees looking well, the greenery on the ground looking well, and getting all of those done. All right, I think if we understand ourselves, you can come back and we will, obviously, will be, those of us around here will be driving by and taking a look to make sure that those plants are green and will continue to be green.
Okay, sure.
Right.
You, you received a watering plan from your landscape architect. If you stick to that plan, I think you'll be fine.
That was giving me that.
Okay.
How do we verify that they're sticking to the plan besides having dead trees in August?
Well, that, that's the landscape architect's concern. That's why he submitted a watering schedule.
Right.
But how do we know that they're doing the watering schedule?
By going and looking at them.
Okay. I stop by all the time, because I have some friends that live over there.
Right.
One thing you could do...
They're expensive plants, Peter. I'm not, not going to want to lose them, you know?
I understand.
Right. So we're just, as I said, you have to be aware that we're looking.
Yes, absolutely.
And that's, okay.
Sure.
Farouk, do you have a project manager on the site there that can verify that they're actually maintaining the watering schedule?
I, I don't quite understand.
Do you have someone on site?
All the time.
That can verify that they're maintaining the watering schedule?
We will do that. I'll have him let me know and I'll let you. Either email or something.
So what you might want to do is have him submit a watering schedule, compliance plan? So just a matrix that says it's watered twice a day and, and verify that they're watered twice a day?
Will do.
Okay. Don't just say yes. Please do it.
Yes.
Please do it. What?
I know, those are very expensive. I can't afford to lose them.
Okay, good.
You know? It was so hard for me to get them.
Okay.
But anyways, thank you.
I thank you, Farouk. All right, we will check on them.
I'm also.
All right, yep. Hope you're feeling better.
Yes, hope you're feeling better, Farouk.
Is there, that finishes my agenda for the moment. Jim, is there anything else you'd like to bring to our attention?
No, you, you've gone through the entire agenda. Our next meeting is Tuesday, July 5. Did you have a question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I will be in present. I know that you mentioned that there might be a remote option, because I think if you wanted to attend, a remote might be the best way to go. But you said you were away, right?
So I'm going to Connecticut, so I'm either going to be home or on the road at that time. I'm trying to come home early.
Okay.
So maybe having that option for might be good, the remote? I'm just throwing it out there.
Yep, that, that certainly could be a possibility.
So you don't have to change your plans?
Yeah.
Okay, we could, we can arrange that. I'm looking at Kristen. Can we arrange that, Kristen?
Well, I need to confirm it with Westboro TV first, so if somebody...
I don't need a Revo meeting.
Oh, you can be here.
I'm either going to be on the road and not be able to participate while I'll be here.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, because I think, actually, this meeting, as you can see, we've got a number of things that have been adjourned, but it's really that I think the meeting after that is going to be the crucial, where a lot of these are going to come back to us to be further discussed.
July 19, okay.
You know, if, if actually, all right, well, why don't we finish this meeting, then we'll continue the discussion. Did I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I can second that.
All in favor? All right, we're adjourned.
So Westboro TV is confirmed. I just saw Karen stick her head out. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.